...General Government Operations and Youth Development now convenes its public hearing in accordance of the open government law. Notices were first sent to the public on Wednesday, January 14th, 2015, and again on Tuesday, January 20th, 2015. And for the record, it is Thursday, January 22nd, 2015, and the time is now 6:03 in the evening. The committee will hear and accept testimony both oral and written on the following items: Bill Number 4-33 LS introduced by myself, an act to restore salaries for elected officials and cabinet members to levels established prior to the enactment of Public Law 32208, to prevent the waiver of the public hearing requirements for bills proposing salary changes for elected officials, and to require that any change in salary of elected officials take effect after a general election to the Guam Legislature has intervened by repealing Public Law 32208 and adding a new subsection 615 and 6215.1 both to Article 2, Chapter 6, Title 4 of the Guam Code annotated. We also have on the agenda Resolution Number 2-33 introduced also by myself relative to respectfully requesting Congresswoman Madeline Zebrodalio to introduce legislation requiring that a general election intervene between enactment of a law to vary the compensation of the governor, lieutenant-governor, and senators in the Guam Legislature and its implementation consistent with the 27th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the senators who are present with us here this evening. The vice chair of the committee is Senator Mary Torres. To my immediate right, I have Senator Tom Adam. To his immediate right is Senator Tina Rose Mooney Barnes. To her immediate right, Senator Tommy Morrison. To his right, Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. And to the right of him is Senator Brent McCreedy. To my immediate left, I have Senator Frank Uggan Jr. And to the immediate left of Senator Mary Torres is Senator Majority Leader Rory Ruscicchio and Senator Nerissa Britannia Underwood. Thank you to my colleagues for joining us here this evening. Just some general rules for the public hearing that we're going to be conducting tonight. Unless otherwise decided by the chair, those testifying will be recognized in the order that they signed up. We will be making an adjustment to that, though, based on the number of participants that we have here this evening. Written testimony may be read. Lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimony should be submitted to the committee for photocopying. Testimony shall be confined to substance or nature of the bill or resolution being heard. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of the author or any member of the panel is not permitted. No debate or rebuttal shall be allowed between two individuals testifying. One may submit additional written testimony following the conclusion of this hearing. Individuals will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. The individual may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony as may be desired by members of the panel. When speaking, please ensure the microphone is on and that you are speaking into the microphone. There's a little button there. If you push it, a red light will turn on indicating that it's on. Individuals are asked to state their name for record purposes. Before we begin with the bill, we do have a lot of members of the community in the foyer of the hall. If I could request the sergeant-at-arms or whoever the attending central office representative is, if they could provide accommodations for our members of the public, maybe seats? If we could have the staff also make sure. Okay, there we go. Okay, we have chairs coming up. Also, if I could direct the staff to check if those individuals would like to also testify. They may not be aware they have to come in and sign up. Because both measures are pretty germane to each other, I'm going to go ahead and make sure that we allow for testimony that's being heard here tonight to be on both matters. That way, we can just get it out of the way. So the first item on the agenda is Bill Number 4-33. And this is consistent with other legislation that was introduced following the increases that were passed on November 21st, 2014. This Bill 4-33 is basically going to repeal the public law that originated out of the salary increases that were given out on November 21st. Bill 4-33 also incorporates some changes that were recommended by our youth congress, who I'm very proud that they contributed to the dialogue that led to the formation of this bill. Our youth congress recommended some of the adjustments that we did put into the bill to include the effective date for any salary changes to be separate from the current term, which was very, very wise of them, and it also inspired the resolution that we're going to be hearing tonight, asking our Congresswoman to make an amendment to the organic debt. The introduction of Bill 4-33 is to repeal all of the raises that were given out on the 21st. And there's something that I would like to qualify with that statement. First and foremost is that the repeal of these raises is not to imply that people aren't working hard in this government. The repeal of these raises to make it very, very clear that if we're going to be giving out raises for our elected and appointed leadership, our elected and appointed leadership needs to make sure that the quality of life on our island is at a level that we're going to be able to be accountable to the people, look them in the eye, and say, "Yeah, I'm worth that increase." And at this point in time, given the many challenges that our government faces, given the quality of life issues that our people face, I, as a senator, an elected leader of this island, and one of the beneficiaries of this increase, could not in good conscience sit by and allow for these increases to take effect without us making every effort to first prioritize the important needs of our community. And it was my hope and anticipation that other elected and appointed leaders of this island could also share in those sentiments. When we first addressed this issue of whether or not we're going to be giving out raises almost a year ago, we were talking about the Competitive Wage Act. And a lot of us who are in this room here tonight were present during those discussions. And what manifested as a result of the passage of that Competitive Wage Act was an increase in pay for our rank-and-file employees. And what we as leaders decided, elected leaders, and what the appointed leadership acquiesced to was that we're going to forego the raises for elected and appointed leaders to make sure that we give out raises for our rank-and-file employees. Now that the election has ended in November, the first course of action that this body took was to go back and give out those raises that we bypassed a year ago. And not only do we give those raises out, but we gave out retro payments going all the way back to January. And there was no public hearing for that measure. So every raise that was given out to the elected leaders and the appointed leaders was given out without any public input. Public input was provided back in January, and that public input resulted in us foregoing the increases. There was no public input that caused us to change our minds. But the course of action that took place on November 21st was very opposite of what we decided back in January of last year. And so what I'm hoping to do with this bill is to hit the reset button, take us back in time to November 21st, and to repeal that law so that we can come back with a clean slate, have public hearings on these issues, and involve our people the right way so they can have a say. And I'm hoping that the elected and the appointed leadership can understand that when it comes to the public trust and when it comes to our duty as leaders, not just elected but appointed, we need to make sure that our people are going to be trusting of the actions that we take, trusting of the decisions that we make, and trusting of what we determine the priorities are going to be on this island. And I know that this is a very difficult thing for all of us to be considering, but I'm asking everybody here tonight to look at it from the perspective of the general public and ask yourself, if you're a member of the general public, how would you feel about this? Not somebody who's benefiting from it, but somebody who's in the general public, how would you feel about this? And so with that, I would like to go ahead and open up the floor for testimony. We do have a large number of people who signed up. If there's any more, please go ahead and bring them up at any time. I'm going to try and organize this in a way so that we're as accommodating to the community as possible. And I know that we do have a large number of members of the government who signed up. So first, I would like to ask if there are any individuals in the audience who have a disability, any members of the community present who have a disability, and if there are, we can go ahead and accommodate you first. If there are none, I would go ahead and ask if there are any senior citizens who would wish to be accommodated in advance prior to anybody else. And if not, then I will go ahead and organize the testimony. I'm sorry. Ah, Mr. C. Okay. And are there any other senior citizens who wish to be accommodated first? Gentlemen, thank you both for joining us here this evening. Just to be clear again also, I'm going to go ahead and accept testimony on both the bill and the resolution in the interest of time and efficiency. So go ahead and I guess you start from right to left, sir. If you can go ahead and state your name for the record. You may begin at any time.
Mr. Chairman and members of the 33rd Guam Legislature, I'm here to testify on Bill 4-32. My name is Susay Eschencharla. I am a resident of Inorahan. I retire, I'm a retiree from the government of Guam from the Department of Corrections. My former position there was correction social worker supervisor and also acting social worker administrator for 13 months, for 13 years. My testimony, and I would like to apologize until I was, I'm able to put this in print because I just had a few moments to write this after the court hearing this morning from the superior, from the district court. So I'm very busy. And I would like to read this testimony. I am here this evening to testify in support of Bill 4-33. I support the three provisions of this bill. It would provide the general public the opportunity to testify for or against government of Guam employees currently in high positions who are recipients of the pay raises as the lieutenant-governor had no hesitation signing such bill before the general election last year in just a few months before 2014. I would like to state, however, that I am not testifying against pay raises. The manner and timing of the pay raises for senators, elected officials, cabinet officials as mentioned publicly by the governor was a big surprise. In my opinion, I would, I, in my opinion, what urgency prompted the author of these pay raises for this very important event on our elected representatives to forego a public hearing. I would like to mention in my testimony that as a government of Guam retirees under the sliding scale in quotes, I appeal to the 33rd Guam Legislature, the governor, to repeal the sliding scale, to repeal the sliding scale and revert the supplemental pay for the retirees as it was originally established. The negative, the negative one to 12 months factor, and this is the descending order for every month that you reach 40,000, your penalize, they took it away. It remains to be a penalty rather than a pension to help the retirees who had depended on this little pay increase. And just to summarize, I find it very difficult that at this time of our island event that is still going on, Senator, the vice speaker, Senator B.J. Cruz and the Honorable Senator Tom Adam were there at the district court. I was there because our road to Inorahan from Ilic to Inorahan was so dilapidated that the safety of our people and all motorists are being undermined every day. And I cannot understand that there is no funding to fix the road after the notorious landfill was built at Dundan. And by the way, the LaZon is a misnomer. It's called LaLazon. For clarification, that is at the edge of the waters, and these are at the edge of the wetlands. So I just want to make that clarification. In addition to that, I believe GWA is in the process of acquiring a joint venture with the Navy to take Fena. And as a result of that, 40% is being contemplated for the island residents, whoever are going to be receiving that water. I don't feel that, you know, all of this event is not very clear to our elected leaders that, you know, these are some of the things that the community need. And most importantly, our road, our road is a one-lane travel road. And just last week, so that you people will understand, there was a big truck, a 16-wheeler dump truck. There was a small car just passed it on the left side, and he was speeding up. I was behind it. I hate to see somebody on the opposite lane smashed, head-on collision and died because people are taking everyday risks. So they have to pick and choose when to do things to avoid that. And I feel that that is not the way we should handle our road for the safety of the public. And that needs more prioritizing, I feel, than probably the pay raises for our high-salaried government official. But don't misunderstand my position. I am for pay raises, but we should consider other, like the Honorable Senator mentioned. And I appreciate that comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. C. Enough of malick at work. Senator Klitsky, please.
Testifying in favor of Bill 4-. You couldn't tell. I'll start again. Mr. Chairman and Honorable Senators, I'm Robert Klitsky. I hold perhaps the highest office in this territory. That is, I am a private citizen. And I'm here to testify in favor of Bill 4-33. I'm going to talk about, by way of foundation and by way of clarification, alacrity, frugality, transparency, and priorities, starting out with frugality. The last time I testified before this august body, I recognized the alacrity which you exhibited last November 21. You, that is the 32nd Guam Legislature, were the textbook example of alacrity when you introduced a bill to increase your salaries by $24,160 and passed it in about an hour. In fact, you exhibited such alacrity that the bill was effective 311 days before it Allowing you to pocket a retroactive check averaging $13,980 and even as much as $15,398.67. Those retroactive checks were in your pockets a mere 28 days after you passed the bill that provided the retro pay. Merry Christmas. On January 20th, the Daily News ran a Pearl Harbor-sized headline that said, "Senator Raises May Mean Cuts. Increases Retro Pay Cost Legislature More Than $500,000." So it looks like you may now have to change your buzzword. Frugality ought to replace alacrity. Let's reflect on what the third president of the United States said in his inaugural. He said, "Thomas Jefferson, a wise and frugal government, which will restrain men from injuring one another, shall leave them otherwise free to regulate their own pursuits of industry and improvement, and shall not take from the mouth of labor the bread it has earned." Now here's an observation that fits into what President Jefferson said. $85,000 is just about enough to pay the wages of five people working at the new minimum wage of $8.25 an hour. $85,000 is $42 an hour. One step toward frugality is to do away with what you have shown you apparently don't need. Consider the hour that you spent passing Bill 8S, which became Public Law 32-208, which you may very well repeal after we've concluded this public hearing. And raised senator salaries and paid out $202,780.46 in retroactive pay to senators and cost the government millions of dollars. We're able to knock that out in about an hour. Since this extremely important matter was dispatched in just about an hour, do we really need a public hearing room? A session hall? And all the trimmings? If such important business can be dispatched so easily and with such alacrity, do we really need this building? Why not cancel the lease on these Hestler Street digs and save the $504,000 that we're paying for this building now? Since you don't need a public hearing room and you use a session hall for such a short time, is it really necessary? You could use a small amount of that more than a half-million-dollar savings to rent one of the banquet rooms in a Tumon hotel. Save all the rest. Cancel the grandiose plans for a new legislative building. You could then use the rent from the United States Post Office lot, which amounts to $201,420 per year. And with that amount of money, you could pay the first $13,428 per year of a senator's salary. And then you could let the museum have the derelict building across from the street from Skinner Plaza and let them develop it to its best use. Frugality trumps alacrity. Next thing I want to talk about is transparency. I won't offer a pithy quote from a statement like President Jefferson to deal with transparency. I'll go the other way and take what Jonathan Gruber said. Jonathan Gruber, made a real name for himself. Jonathan Gruber said, "Lack of transparency is a huge political advantage." I guess we've seen that. A demonstration of a Gruberism arises from the study of senatorial salaries showing how senators, showing how those salaries rose from $40,000 to $85,000 without the benefit of a single public hearing and with only one hour of floor debate, but with about $30,000 worth of retroactive pay in the process. So I've laid out the chronology here, starting back in 1988. I won't go through the whole thing, but on September 27, 1991, Civil Service Commission was given the authority to set senatorial salaries at $55,303. That was part of the first hay salary increases. So the Civil Service Commission pursuant to the hay study set senatorial salaries at From October 1, 1991 to March 3, 2003, that's the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th, and 27th Guam Legislatures, senatorial pay was $55,303 per the Civil Service Commission. I've attached as an exhibit a paper from the Civil Service Commission that shows how that happened. On, senatorial salaries remained at $55,000 until October 1, 2003, when senators discovered a way to raise salaries on November 24, 2010. A bogus interpretation raised senator salaries from $55,303 to $60,840. And of course, the increase was retroactive back to January 5, 2009. So legislation that would prohibit retroactive salary increases for senators is certainly well-taken. And finally, on last November 21, senators raised their salaries another $24,160 per annum, and again with a retroactive pay increase back to January 15, 2014. There was no public hearing along the way, and the session on November 21 lasted only about an hour. In a little over 10 years, senator's salaries increased from $40,000 to $85,000 without the benefit of a public hearing and with only about an hour's worth of discussion on the floor of the legislature. Lack of transparency is indeed a huge political advantage. Going to move on to priorities. One more quote, well, actually, second to the last quote. This one's from Lee Iacocca. He's an old timer now, but he's the guy that saved Chrysler Corporation the time before last. And Lee Iacocca said, "To succeed today, you have to set priorities. Decide what you want to stand for. You've set your priorities and you've shown what you stand for. You have raised your salary to a level where those salaries now rank second in the nation among the salaries of state legislatures. A high ranking indeed. If highest senatorial salaries is your priority, you have much to be proud of. But how about some of the endeavors that constitute, as you were, that your constituents think are priorities? Do our public schools rank second highest in the nation? Do our public libraries rank second best in the country? How about our hospital? Second best in the land? How do we rank for public safety, police, fire protection? Do we rank ahead of all but one of the states?" And I'm going to add one more. How about dumps? How do we work for landfills? Do we have a prize-winning landfill? In fact, are we second place in any other category except for your senator salaries? Streets, roads, highways, jails, prisons, correctional facilities, public transportation? What? Rather than frugality, it seems you're pursuing royalty. Examples, princely salaries of $85,000 per annum and a regal annual budget of about $8.2 million per year or more than a half-million dollars per senator on average. Baroneal offices, which rent for as much as $3,000 a month, a retinue for each senator of sometimes as many as 13 people. Majestic plans to develop the derelict building, as you were derelict legislative building, into a palace to accommodate only the creme de la creme, meaning the legislative leadership only. So I guess you could, one of the things you could consider, you could just shrug it off. Should you roll back salaries to $55,303 and start over observing the necessary formalities and public hearings and meaningful floor debate? Just ride it out and keep the money. Conventional wisdom maintains that the public has short memories. It holds that an outrageous senatorial action, it holds that given an outrageous senatorial action, there will be a short public uproar which will quickly pass, and by the next election, most everyone will have forgotten. No problem. But that was then, and this is now. Now we have newspapers with strong editorial policies obviously opposed to what you've done. Now we have a vociferous youth congress, the members of which have a strong sense of financial responsibility even if you don't. Now we have firebrands like Andrew Bynum, leading groups like Guamanians for a Fair Government, circulating petitions in opposition to what you have done. Now we have digital devices that can store unlimited amounts of data, tracking what you have and haven't done. Now we have social media, which keeps a huge segment of the population connected, informed, and mobilized about what you have done. I think it's just a short time before we'll have some entrepreneur who starts making refrigerator magnets to help them remember until next year. It is now 656 days, 656 days till the next election on November 8. Last quote. You remember- You remember Clint Eastwood as Dirty Harry? Clint Eastwood as Dirty Harry. You've got to ask yourself, "Do I feel lucky?" Well, do you, Senator? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Klitschko. Mr. Perez? If you can just state your name for the record, so that we can get you on.
Good evening, honorable senators of the 33rd Guam Legislature. And my sincere congratulations for making the top 15 on November 4, 2014. My name is Daniel Perez, a product of the private sector for two separate billion-dollar corporations for a period of over 40 years. 20 years of that is in a performance in a management workforce in San Francisco, California. My testimony this evening are based on true facts, nothing fabricated. I have nothing to gain, my testimony, and with no personal interests. I have no problem conducting myself this evening ballistic, in a ballistic behavior, and to be very blunt. But I would rather testify and try diplomacy with the arguments of pay raises for government of Guam employees and elected officials. We can argue the true facts indefinitely until we are blue on the face. It's an endless process. How do we arrive here this evening on Bill 4-33? It's quite interesting. The damage is already done with the public law 208. I need to remind myself, it was the 32nd Guam Legislature, performance of public law 238. The first deficiencies was the Hay Study group of 2010. The Hay Study was not at all compared to any private consulting firm with the same ratings. The Hay Group is not even listed on the top 10 private consulting firm in the nation. I have the list of the top 10 in the nation. What does the top 10 stands for? The top 10 consulting firms in the nation is like the Oscar awards in the movie industry. Over 1,000 professional management consultants go through a long list of categories for rating the top 10. Our executive branch of government of Guam with the highest elected public office that tells the people of Guam, "I deserve a raise." Do you think this is irresponsible? Do you think that that remark or statement have some decency to the poor? The hungry? The unemployed? The homeless? And the minimum wage that are trying to survive on $8.25 per hour? Which is a little bit over $15,000 annually. $40,000 pay raise is a lot of money. It would be very interesting to know what mathematical calculus is used to arrive at the figure of 40,000. We in the private sector remembers the fiasco of 5440 a few years ago. Whenever the subject comes up about pay raises for senators, it becomes an extremely flammable issue throughout the taxpayers. As everyone will agree, it's a very sensitive subject. $60,000 annually for senators is extremely a low salary in comparison to mayors, vice-mayors, and management personnel in the employment of government of Guam. We are aware now it's $85,000 based on public law 32-208. We don't think there is a dispute about pay raises. The arguments are more likely based on at what percentage of pay raise? And are funds available and justified? The entire population of Guam are well aware of the serious deficiencies on Guam in health care, education, and public safety. To improve the general welfare and satisfactory quality of life on Guam are seriously dependent on which direction we're going out of the six directions within our environment. Should we go to the left? The right? The rear? The downward? The upward? The forward? Evidently, the right direction at this point in time is questionable and marginal. Ladies and gentlemen, honorable senators, the decisions on Bill 4-33 authored by Honorable Senator Michael F. Q. S. Nicholas are entirely up to you, the 33rd Guam Legislature. Four years from now, till the year 2018, is a long way. It's the same as saying that 31,536 seconds in a year, times four years, equal to 126,144 seconds in four years is definitely a long period of time to go if we need to go in the other direction. On Don Quixote, Jesus Marci, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, and thank you, gentlemen, for sharing your wisdom with us this evening. I would like to ask if there are any members of the body who have any questions for this panel? If none, gentlemen, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to extend a, I would like to extend a a special courtesy to, um... the widow of the former director of the Department of Land Management, Ms. Elizabeth Mafness, in honor of the memory of the service of her husband, Mr. Monti Mafness. Ma'am, if you can go ahead and take the floor.
How far day, Mr. Chairman, Senator S. Nicholas. My name is and vice chairman, chairwoman, Senator Torres. Senator McCrudy. Senator B.J. Cruz. Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. Senator Morrison. Senator Munier Barnes. Senator Ada. Senator Spisho. And Senator Underwood. My name is Elizabeth A. Mafness, widow of the late Monti Mafness, former director of the Department of Land Management. I was married to the late Monti Mafness. And I watched him work well into the night, till the following morning to get things done in the name of the needy and deserving families who are underserved, asking for help. My late husband was good at what he did, but his work didn't end there. He reached out to his counterparts, fellow cabinet, to find resolution to those who sought his help. Monti had an open-door policy. Regardless of the task at hand, he made sure that individuals who came to his office were heard, one way or another. And Wednesdays were special. He called it the People's Day. On this day, he wouldn't schedule meetings or anything that lasted too long to make sure that if someone walked into his office, they wouldn't be made to wait for a long time. Clearly, this administration, Governor Eddie Baza Calvo's administration, is moving in the right direction. We have witnessed many changes and improvements that have impacted every person who calls Guam their home. This administration is not just an eight-to-five type of job. Work involves many man-hours, careful planning, and coordination among agencies to find resolutions in critical areas. Governor Eddie Baza Calvo and his people have earned the pay adjustment. I'm here to testify against Bill 433 on behalf of the governor and his people who work tirelessly to make Guam a better place to live. Unfortunately, my late husband, my dear husband, is not here tonight. But if he were here, I can guarantee you that he would be here testifying against this bill. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Mrs. Mafness, and thank you also to the whole family and to your late husband for his service. It is very much appreciated by all of the people of Guam. Are there any senators who wish to have any conversations or questions with Mrs. Mafness? Ma'am, thank you very much for being here this evening. I know that that was not easy. Thank you. At this time also, I've received a note here that the Speaker of the Congress would like to bump up his testimony time because he will be departing soon. So if I could ask Mr. Lawrence Al Cairo to please join us in the hearing.
How far day, and thank you again for the kind courtesy. For the record, again, my name is Lawrence Al Cairo, a biology student at the University of Guam, the University of Guam representative to the Guam Youth Congress and the speaker of that body. I want to thank Senator S. Nicholas for holding this hearing, and I want to also thank those that have supported the intent of this bill from the beginning in both this 33rd and in the 32nd Legislature. I fully support this bill, as I've said, because I believe that 32-208 in of itself is a different appropriation that was not given the proper scrutiny. I especially support Bill 4-33 because it mirrors a version that the Guam Youth Congress itself passed at its own regular session, following the proper protocol. If the Guam Youth Congress, of which many of you found your roots, can do our job, holding session, listening to constituents, and passing bills, such as the one that mirrored Senator S. Nicholas's, why is it that, without even a clearly defined budget, this body feels that this raise is necessary for the elected and appointed officials to do their job? The Executive Director of the Legislature, Vince Ariola himself, said the legislature would need to work around the increases, further burdening the hard work that the staff of this legislature already do to improve the island. A big part of this discussion is not whether this raise was deserved, but an even bigger fact, I think, is the manner in which it happened. Why is it that in order for a minimum wage increase to happen for the island that would put the people who are struggling most on this island at a line, at a level slightly above the poverty line, takes studies and hours of discussion? But in order for elected officials and appointed members to get a raise, much of which is higher than the salary of those that do work full-time minimum wage jobs, only takes a couple of hours and no public hearing? I'm not saying that this raise isn't merited for a number of individuals. What I'm saying, it's not about substance, but principle. Principle is the difference between under the table and transparency. Appropriation and stealing. Right and wrong. But I will not hold the 33rd Legislature fully accountable for the actions of the 32nd because with a new body comes new hope. Hope that this body will rise to the occasion of taking responsibility of repealing an unethical law that it itself did not pass. Hope. Earlier this morning, I was at a conference. Hopeful youth leaders from the Philippines came to Guam because it was paradise to them. Not just physically, but politically. Backdoor deals are done there. Lies are threatened, and the public is avoided in their homeland, all for the sake of political advantage, which they wanted to escape from if only for a moment. This hearing will be in the news tomorrow. Guaranteed. Is this really what you want our visitors to see? That we're arguing over something as important as principle, rather than substance? Speaker Wampat was the keynote speaker at this conference this morning. And she said as Speaker, her goal was to bring respect to the legislature because she felt that the public mocked this body. Look around you. There are signs. Signs that clearly say that this measure is a joke. I plead to our esteemed legislatures to please fix the roads, properly fund the government, and properly follow procedure as outlined by law. Let's not just show the youth of Guam, but the youth of the world what it means to be a leader in paradise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for your participation this evening. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments for the Speaker of the Guam Youth Congress? If none, Lawrence, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What I'm trying to do in this hearing is provide as much of a balanced approach as possible so that we're not tilting anything one way or the other and we're being as fair as possible to everybody. So in the interest of alternating back and forth between pro and con, I do have a number of cabinet officials who have signed up, and I would like to invite all of them up to the table at this time. The Director of the Department of Administration, Ms. Benita Manglotnia. The Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Mr. James Gilliam. The Director of the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities, Mr. Ben Servino. And the Chief of the Guam Fire Department, Chief Joe S. Nicholas. If you can please join us here this evening. I don't want to presume that any agency is more important than any other, so I'll just go ahead and say we'll start from right to left. Is that all right? Or, I know, Madam Director, you had a PowerPoint presentation. Would you like that to be the?
This one doesn't work.
Oh, I see. Okay, was this, okay. Well, if you could please provide your PowerPoint to the committee.
It's in my computer, but the connection.
It just, we had technical difficulties?
Yeah, we have technical difficulties.
So if you can just provide a printed copy, or if you need assistance in printing it, we can help on the committee. And then we will include it in the committee report.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead and just start from right to left.
How far day, good evening, Senator S. Nicholas and members of the 33rd Guam Legislature. I would like to start by commending and congratulating the youth congress for their participation in these democratic processes. And I encourage them to continue their drive towards public service and always direct their efforts to a better Guam. However, it is with great frustration and disappointment that I submit this testimony in strong opposition to Bill 4-33. This testimony is specific to the repeal of public law 32-208. This is at least the third attempt to reverse a law that has corrected an injustice over many years in existence. The irony is the same justification that supports public law 32-208 is what this body used to pass the Competitive Wage Act for the rank and file. All of which are absolutely deserving for the positions they hold. I have stated many times in at least two public hearings that those in leadership positions should never talk about their worth in public. That's a meeting that should happen between them and their evaluator. Yet here I am once again, attempting to persuade this body to do the right thing and stick by their decision to pass what was then Bill 1-8S. Upon my return from deployment back in early 2014, I was called by Senator B.J. Cruz to the table and gave verbal testimony in support of the original bill that started all this. Later in the same year, I sat here once again and gave testimony in support of a bill that specifically addressed the chief of police and the fire chief. Today, my testimony is much of the same. The cabinet positions in the government of Guam are executive-level management positions that merit executive-level salaries. It is a simple justification exemplified in every organization to include private, federal, and military, except in the government of Guam executive branch. That's where the focus of the conversation needs to be. There are only three primary reasons that I have heard people use to justify the repeal of this law. First, there was no public hearing. I have stated earlier that I sat here in front of you at least two times prior to today to offer testimony on this subject. Regardless, we are here now, and so I believe this reason is met. Second, some use the performance of certain individuals in these positions. And this is my biggest contention with this whole thing because it is the position, not the person in it, that we should be addressing. Add to that, all of you here had a piece in the confirmation of every single cabinet and board member. And so you too have ownership in the performance of these individuals. I say to you that if a higher caliber of individuals is what you want to see in these positions, then you must make sure these positions attract these individuals. And that starts and ends with salary. Third, our island of Guam and this government have many other issues we need to solve. Ladies and gentlemen, there will always be problems and issues to solve, regardless whether you are here in Guam or in the richest states and countries. whether you are here in Guam or in the richest states and countries around the world. The first step to solving these problems is attracting our most talented and capable leaders who can bring real solutions, and yes, that brings us back to appropriate salaries. As your fire chief, even after the passage of Public Law 32-203, I still make less than 80%... I still make less than 80% of my force. External comparisons to fire chiefs in the military and federal entities here on Guam and in the Pacific in Hawaii to the West Coast, the fire chief salary of the Guam Fire Department makes $30,000 to $50,000 per annum less. I have submitted these numbers to this legislature before. I have sacrificed the quality of life I have worked hard for to step up and lead a beaten organization over three years ago. What we have accomplished in the past three years and what will be accomplished just in this year alone going forward is proof that our government is improving and our island is growing. I have been given many attractive opportunities to move on, but it's here where I would like to stay, but I can't afford to sacrifice that much anymore. Your actions on this bill will determine my way ahead. Once again, I oppose Bill 4-33, and thank you for allowing my testimony.
Thank you, Chief. Just to clarify, if I may, even if Public Law 3208 is repealed because your salary increase was addressed in a separate piece of legislation, it will not be affected? And so, that's just to clarify for the record.
Actually, Senator, it does affect because what that bill did was the average of the three years or the salary set by the governor, whichever is higher.
How does that compare to what was passed when Senator Ada introduced the...
So, because of certain specific language that was used in Bill 32-20... 20... I'm sorry, 202, saying earned income as opposed to annual salary. And so, for those three years prior to the fire chief, my average salary became less because of the earned income aspect due to the fact that I was on military training for all three of those years for at least five months at a time.
So, just to clarify so I can understand exactly what we're dealing with, the bill that addressed your salary in particular and the chiefs that was introduced by Senator Ada adjusted your salary upwards to a certain level. But Public Law 32-208 adjusted it even higher?
No, it did not touch my salary at all, that particular law. However, it was an important bill, and it's appropriate because, you know, I'm an exception to the case. I stepped up from a fire lieutenant, which is rank-and-file, up to the fire chief. What that bill does, which is what it was intended to do, was to encourage those in the higher rank, such as, you know, executive managers, assistant fire chiefs, and battalion chiefs, to step up to the position without a pay loss. So, it's an excellent law, and I wouldn't like to see it amended. But this particular law, 32-208, does affect the position of the fire chief.
I see. So, then, just so I'm clear, Senator Ada's law addressed the issue of whether or not someone would assume the chief's position and take a step down, but 32-208 was what brought you a step up because you've assumed the chief's position?
Yes, it did help, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your testimony, sir. Mr. Servino.
Buenos dias, Senator S. Nicholas and members of the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development. For the record, my name is Benito Ben S. Servino, and I currently serve as the Director of the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities, DISIT for short. I have had an opportunity to review Bill Number 4-33 LS, and though I do understand the reasons for the introduction of this bill, I wish to express my concern in opposition to the passage of this bill. As a human services professional, it is very difficult for me to come before you to discuss the reasons for the introduction of this bill. I wish to express my concern in opposition to the passage of this bill. The increase that, of course, would benefit myself and my other colleagues within the cabinet, it may seem very self-serving and inconsiderate of me in light of all the other major issues and priorities and concerns that have been plaguing in our community for so many years, such as the need to allocate existing resources to repair our public roads, have reliable transportation, address the needs of our public schools, hire more police officers, et cetera. Many of these issues have been addressed within the last four years, and they will continue to be an ongoing concern that can be addressed in future budgeting and the procurement process. I have always encouraged our constituents with disabilities to be a strong self-advocate, and I now need to practice what I preach so there is a better understanding and awareness of the disparities that exist and the impact this bill will have on cabinet members such as myself. Some people are not aware that I personally made a huge sacrifice to leave my family and to relocate back to Guam to serve as the Director of DISIT. I accepted a significant loss in earnings, knowing that the rate of inflation and the cost of living associated with this geographical area is much higher in relation to other geographical areas in the mainland. However, I wanted to return back to Guam because I know the concerns of the disability community and want to help in addressing these concerns. Some of DISIT's major accomplishments include getting out of receivership under the permanent injunction. We have also conducted an aggressive multimedia campaign to educate the community about the accessible parking law, and we have developed informational brochures that were targeted towards businesses and for qualified individuals with mobility impairments. We also have established ADA coordinators within all the government of Guam agencies and continue to provide ADA training and technical assistance support throughout the community. To help build the capacity of our vocational rehab program, two of our VR counselors will provide funding support to enroll in an online master's degree program in rehabilitation counseling, and they will both be graduating this spring. One of our VR counselors recently passed the CRC exam and recently received her certification rehab counseling. These are just a few of our many accomplishments, and we look forward to continue addressing the needs and improving the quality of life of our constituents. We all recognize the importance of maintaining competitive compensation for all public officials, especially if our government is to strive in recruiting and retaining the most highly-qualified, competent, and professional agency heads. Salaries for cabinet members have remained the same for the last four years under the Calvo Tenorio administration as compared to classified employees who were able to receive a pay raise based on the HAYES studies. I am very mindful and passionate about overall organizational performance and do not have selfish antagonistic attitude towards other government employees that have received these raises. Our governor has high expectations from each of his cabinet members, and often, he reiterates the importance of performance-based outcomes and maintaining fiscal accountability and cost-savings measures within each of the departments. Due to attrition and limited resources, I have assumed extra responsibilities, serving as the state ADA coordinator, deputy director, division administrator, public information's officer, counselor, mentor, and trainer. Not only am I accountable to the governor, the lieutenant-governor, this legislature, the public auditor, the federal grantor, the advisory council members, but I also answer to our many constituents with disabilities and their families. Keeping all of this in mind, I do not support the passage of Bill Number 4-33, and I highly recommend that the salary compensation of cabinet members be retained at the existing recommended HAYES study level. Respectfully, Ben Servino.
Thank you, Mr. Servino. Benita?
Buenos dias, Senator S. Nicholas and members of this committee. I am Benita Manglonia, Director of Administration, and I am here to testify in opposition of Bill Number 4-33, an act to restore salaries for elected officials and cabinet members to levels established prior to the enactment of Public Law 32-208. If you will recall, one year ago, I appeared before this committee in support of the government of Guam Competitive Wage Act of 2014. Public Law 30-196, amended by Public Law 32-68, appropriates funding for the government of Guam Competitive Wage Act of 2014, which precedes a final implementable plan to adjust compensation, classification, and benefits by Imagaloja to Legislatura for approval. Public Law 32-136, however, unfairly excluded the implementation of the pay plan for cabinet and elected leaders. I oppose the bill because, as Director of the Department of Administration, I am responsible for ensuring that the government of Guam's compensation policy is both internally equitable and externally competitive and is administered equitably and uniformly. If passed, Bill Number 433, like Public Law 32-136, will result in the unfair treatment of executive and elected leaders. Individuals in these positions deserve to be justly paid for their services. Let's take, for example, my position as Director of Administration. I oversee the entire operations of the Department of Administration, which is comprised of Division of Accounts, Human Resources, and General Services Agency. DOA is responsible for the central financial division, which oversees all accounting, internal controls, financial reporting, procurement, and human resources for the entire government of Guam. Other responsibilities include providing central accounting services for line departments and agencies, which involves accounting for almost $1 billion of revenues and expenditures spread over 100 governmental funds, accounting and managing over 600 federal grants, processing invoices for 46 line agencies and semi-autonomous agencies, over 5,300 general ledger accounts, and over 150 bank and bond accounts, providing a uniform financial management system and other related systems of internal accounting controls for line organizations of the government, also providing for accurate and timely financial information for management and analyzing and interpreting the information to comply with the statutory requirements, administering the personnel management program for over 3,400 employees of non-autonomous departments and agencies within the executive branch in the areas of recruitment, test development and validation, classification and compensation, employee records, employee management relations, and employee benefits assistance. These responsibilities include, first and foremost, the holding of the merit system in regards to recruitment established by the Organic Act of Guam, administering the compensation policy for the government of Guam, reviewing and approving personnel rules and regulations for the government as a whole pursuant to the administrative adjudication law, overseeing the administration of statutes relative to bargaining units and unions within the government of Guam, providing effective training-related services to support efforts to implement sound management and employee performance practices, and to administer the Equal Employment Opportunity Program for the government of Guam, serving also as the chairperson of the government of Guam Health Insurance Negotiating Team, which requires me and the members to design, procure, negotiate, and implement the health insurance benefit for the entire government of Guam. With all these duties and responsibilities, my compensation is much less than what officials are making in autonomous agencies and public corporations. The legislature, this body, gave authority to governing boards in those agencies to set their own compensation plans, which had the effect of further diluting the internal equity of compensation within the government as a whole.